To order the Weewee City Council meeting of August 3, 2009, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Karen Berry.
Here.
Dean Goke.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Lena Rotola.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
And Terry Wamboldt.
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 13, 2009?
Second.
You have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
I thank you. We have several proclamations tonight.
We have, we also have approval of minutes from our last meeting, last week as well.
Okay, that's why.
That would be the July 27 meeting. We can do that.
Mr. Dahl, is that, how's that gonna work?
You can put them on consent calendar if you like, or an action item. Doesn't really matter.
Matter?
Oh, oh, the, the meeting that, the, um, it wasn't a, it wasn't a, a meeting, and so, other than just keeping a record, I think it's not necessarily useful for this council to approve minutes of a, of a meeting that didn't, that there was not a regular or special meeting. Instead, it's a record of proceedings that took place, but it doesn't require action, I've been able to counsel.
There is the one action that council can take when it's not a quorum, and that is to continue a meeting. Is that not, is that not to be properly recorded as a real minutes document?
And, and we have, but I'm not sure they're actually, may very well be a distinction without a difference in terms of the larger scheme of, of things, and the problem is we would not have a quorum to approve those minutes in any event, because the council members that are present now that were not then would defeat the quorum to act on that, on that motion.
Very well.
So, I think we keep the record of, of what took place, which is the one action they could take, which was to extend the agenda, and I think that's sufficient action for you to take.
Okay, thank you. I want to go down to the, for the proclamations.
Pretty much you don't have to vote on the minutes.
Tonight, our first award, we have a award for the Weewee Police Department and Chief Brennan. I'm gonna ask John Patterson from Cherry Hills PD to please come forward. He's the president of the Colorado Association of State Chiefs, and I also ask Chief Brennan to please come forward.
Mayor DiTulio and members of the Weewee City Council, good evening. My name is John Patterson. I'm the police chief of the city of Cherry Hills Village, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police and the county sheriffs of Colorado. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate a significant accomplishment by your police department. My purpose here tonight is to present Chief Brennan with a certificate which awards accreditation status to the Weewee Police Department. If you'd asked Chief Brennan about his police department, he would tell you the city of Weewee has one of the finest agencies in the state. You'd expect nothing less from him. Based upon this accreditation award, other chiefs and sheriffs would frankly agree with him. Let me share a little history about law enforcement accreditation with you. In 1985, Colorado recognized the importance of developing professional standards for all law enforcement agencies in the state, and began the work of establishing a center of professional standards and an accreditation program. In 1994, the Colorado chiefs and county sheriffs joined together to offer a combined accreditation process. Over the years, the accreditation standards have been approved upon and new standards have been added. The accreditation process requires agencies to comply with 193 professionally recognized standards. These standards are intended to define the role and responsibilities of a Colorado peace officer and to enhance the quality of services by law enforcement. The standards cover topic areas such as code of conduct, ethics, use of force, organizational structure, accountability, management of critical incidents, community partnerships, and patrol operations, to highlight just a few. There are 233 law enforcement agencies in Colorado. Only 34 of these agencies are state accredited. It is not an easy process, and involves a lot of work and commitment by every member of the department. In order to become an accredited law enforcement agency, the Weewee Police Department had to comply with 186 mandatory and seven optional professional standards, which were verified by an onsite assessment team of police officials from Lakewood and Cherry Hills Village. The onsite involved a tour of your police facility, and a thorough review of the agency's policy directive manual, and frankly, other documentation to ensure compliance with the accreditation standards. The Weewee Police Department met or exceeded all the established standards. I was the lead assessor for this process, and I was impressed with the level of professionalism, pride, and commitment to providing exceptional customer service I found here among all your police department employees. In addition, as a sorcerer agency, having accredited police department provides your community with bonus points with sorcerer, which can reduce your insurance cost. I know as elected official of this city, you are very proud of your police department and its employees. Chief Brennan's initiative to pursue state accreditation speaks highly of his leadership skills and his vision for this agency by moving the organization forward to a higher level of excellence. It also speaks highly of the police department staff, who has demonstrated a commitment to providing quality law enforcement services to the citizens of Weewee. On behalf of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police and the county sheriffs of Colorado, it is my pleasure to present the Weewee Police Department and Chief Brennan with its accreditation plaque.
Just briefly, you know, an accomplishment like this wasn't done by the chief of police, was done by dedicated staff of professionals, and I'd like to take an opportunity just to recognize a few of those individuals. Division Commander Joe Cassa, Division Commander Jim Lorenz, Lieutenant Pickett, Lieutenant Mark Cooney, Lieutenant Wade Hammond, and Sergeant J.D. Jepkman, to name just a few employees that were involved in this process, and really, my hat goes off to them. It's their commitment and professionalism, I think, that's reflected in this, this award. Thank you.
The next proclamation, I'm going to ask Mrs. Weewee to please read. This is our 40th birthday celebration for the city of Weewee. I'm also going to ask our Carnation Festival attendees to please come forward, Sherri John, our chair, Tom Myers, and Reeve Abbott, please come forward. We're gonna read two, so we're gonna do our 40th, and I'll also do the Carnation Festival.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, citizens of Weewee, good evening. Whereas August 20 marks the 40th birthday of the city of Weewee, being incorporated as a city in the Denver metro area on August 20, 1969, known then as the Carnation City. Whereas at the time of Weewee's incorporation, the population was about 32,000 citizens, 8.85 square miles, and had some 600 businesses. Local newspaper coverage was provided weekly by the Weewee Sentinel. Whereas Mr. Ed Anderson was elected the first mayor of Weewee in 1969. Whereas the citizens of Weewee voted for the creation of a home rural city on November 2, 1976. Whereas in 1977, the city officially adopted an official city seal designed by Aaron Johnson. Whereas officially adopted the motto, "Citizens create the quality of their government through participation or neglect." Whereas current and past elected officials have invested countless hours in advancing Weewee as a vibrant and sustainable community. Whereas the city charter provides for the council manager form of government approved by voters in 1996. And city departments organize to provide high-quality services to the public to include police, public works, parks and recreation, municipal court, administrative services, community development, and city clerk. Whereas on August 15, 6:00 PM, at the 40th Annual Carnation Festival, Mayor Jerry DiTulio will recognize those citizens involved in the incorporation of the city and former elected officials. Therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Jerry DiTulio and the Weewee City Council formally declares Thursday, August 20, 2009, as the city's 40th birthday celebration day in Weewee, Colorado, and publicly thanks those citizens who had the foresight to form this great city. Whereas the Weewee Carnation Festival, an annual event, is celebrating its 40th year. And whereas the Carnation Festival is a series of events in the community commemorating the history and traditions of Weewee and celebrating our citizens, businesses, and service organizations. And whereas the Carnation Festival mission is to showcase a Weewee-specific community celebration featuring all the uniqueness and positive energy that our city and its residents have to offer. Whereas just a few of the events scheduled for the three-day Carnation Festival at Anderson Park, 44th Avenue, and Field Street, from Thursday through Saturday include nightly concerts in the park, various contests and booths, artistic and cultural events and displays, and events for kids of all ages. And whereas the festival includes a fireworks extravaganza at Anderson Park on Friday and Saturday nights, and a parade on Saturday at 10:00 AM along 38th Avenue. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council, I do hereby proclaim August 9 through the 16th, 2009, Carnation Festival Week. I just wanna take this opportunity to thank everyone for all of the support that they have given us. We have really had a great time putting this festival together and trying to make it really special for something that is very special, and that is the 40th birthday of Weewee and the 40th birthday of, the anniversary of the Carnation Festival. And I am very proud to tell council that we had set a goal this year of raising $60,000, and we surpassed that tonight with another contribution that came in. So, we are over our $61,000 mark, and I'm very excited about that, and wanna thank all of you for your support. And please take a chance to look at the new programs. I think they're outstanding. We have had a volunteer working on that for us, Lynn Noonan, and she has just done a fabulous job. I will give her a plug if anybody needs artwork done or graphic design. Lynn has just been stellar, night and day. She's been my best friend at 11 o'clock at night and 5:30 in the morning, as we put all of that together. And I also want to thank my board. You know, great things happen, but it's not because of one person. Great things happen because you have a fabulous team. And as my son would tell you, there is no "I" in team. So, I have a couple of board members here that I want to thank, Reeve Abbott and Tom Myers, and the other ones, we just finished a meeting, and they're busy, out busy now trying to get all of the programs placed and the posters out, so thanks for all of your support. This has been wonderful.
The next proclamation is for Relay for Life. Tommy, you staying for that one too? You might as well.
Whereas the American Cancer Society is a nationwide, community-based voluntary health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives, and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. Whereas there is, there is an estimated 10.5 million Americans with a history of cancer alive today, and one in three Americans will be diagnosed with cancer in our lifetimes. And whereas this year alone, more than 1.4 million new cases of cancer will be diagnosed in the United States, and 19,190 cases in the state of Colorado. And whereas money raised during the American Cancer Society Relay for Life of Weewee helps support statewide research, education, advocacy, and local patient services. And now therefore, be it, be it resolved that I, Jerry DiTulio, mayor of the city of Weewee, do hereby proclaim August 7 and 8, 2009, as Relay for Life days in the city of Weewee, and encourage citizens to participate in the Relay for Life at the Weewee Recreation Center.
This definitely has been a planning year with the economy and things like that for our fundraising efforts, but we're over the $7,000 mark, still growing every hour, it seems like. But the event is this Friday, August 7, at 7:00 PM at the Rec Center, and it goes all night long throughout the Rec Center, so we have the whole place to ourselves. But there'll be activities for everyone, there's a survivors reception, walking, of course, on the upper level, and a DJ, and all kinds of games. So, great for the whole family to come out, especially if you know somebody, and usually everyone does, that has been touched by cancer. So, do encourage you to come out to the Weewee Rec Center, just to come by. If it's 4:00 AM or 2:00 AM, we hope to see you there. Thanks.
The last proclamation we have tonight is recognition of assistance by local agencies following the major storm on July 20, 2009. I guess I would ask Mr. Young to come forward, and we'll give this proclamation to you after it's read.
To recognize the selfless, selfless efforts of local agencies that provided resources and volunteers to assist the city of Weewee and our storm cleanup efforts. Whereas on the evening of Monday, July 20, 2009, Weewee was hit by a major storm about 9:45 PM. The storm had devastating impacts on the northwest side of the city. Trees were uprooted, damaging homes and blocking roadways. Citizens in this area of the city experienced major power outages, some for hours and others for several days. Traffic flow is interrupted by dark intersections and roadways by inaccessible downed power lines, all threatening quality of life in the city. Whereas Weewee is privileged to have many dedicated staff and citizens of goodwill who committed their time and energy unselfishly to helping their community clean up after the storm. Whereas the city is deeply appreciative for the assistance from local fire and EMS providers who responded promptly in order to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. Whereas without request, local agencies, including the city of Golden and the International Code Council of Colorado, volunteered their resources, including staff, to assist the city in our cleanup efforts. Whereas the city would like to thank the staff of Excel Energy who worked to restore power to citizens, also the Colorado Department of Transportation for their assistance in cleanup efforts. Additionally, a special thanks goes to the city of Lakewood Joint Emergency Operations Center. Whereas while government has great responsibilities for public health and safety, the city acknowledges that it takes an entire community of neighboring cities and local agencies working together to recover from the devastating forces of Mother Nature. Therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Jerry, Jerry DiTulio and the Weewee City Council formally thank those who have given so much in assisting Weewee during the storm cleanup.
Again, I just wanna add my thanks as well. Very proud of the community as we all came together to deal with this, with the storm. And I'll make sure, pardon me, I'll make sure that all the agencies that were involved with helping us out get a copy of this proclamation and make sure they're aware of it. Thank you again.
Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when you, time is up. So if you're under public comment, please step forward at the podium and state your name and spell your last name for the record, and your city or your address.
I am Lynn Raber, and...
Lynn, could you spell your last name for the record and pull the mic down a little bit, please? Thank you.
You spell it R-A-B-E-R. I represent Table Mountain Animal Shelter. The address of the shelter is 4105 Young Field Service Road. I came here tonight, first of all, I'm very proud to represent the foundation. I am a board member, and I want you to know that we are working very hard to build a new shelter, one that the county can be proud of. I know during this economic time, it's sometimes a little depressing to look at the way the economy's been going, but we on the board have been working very hard and we're very dedicated to bringing this new building to fruition. I came to thank Mayor DiTulio and the city of Weewee for their generous donation in helping us to achieve our goal. The building, the new shelter's gonna be located on the existing fairgrounds on 6th Avenue, it's very visible, and during these particular times, we have seen an increase in the number of animals that have come through our doors. We easily see over 10,000 animals a year, and those numbers are, are going up, and it's, it's very frustrating. I don't know if you've seen our existing shelter, I invite you all down if you would like to come take a look. But this building is a necessity, we do need it, and so we are very grateful for the city of Weewee for your donation in helping us to achieve our goal. And I'd also like to thank Patrick Goff for his continued support, and he's, he's been very instrumental in helping us get where we need to be. Again, it's, I don't know if you've seen our new location, but we are easily over-doubling our size. We have a long way to go, we have a lot of money to raise, we, our goal is to raise 3 million. We, at this point, we have over 700,000 in pledges, so we're working hard, it is not an easy time. And we'd like to invite all of the cities within the county to join us in our efforts so we can achieve this. This is gonna be a building that the county can be very proud of. It has everything that we need to increase our adoptions and keep, keep the animals safe and keep them adoptable. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll continue to work towards our goal. And I think Diane Lopez would like to say a few words to...
Diane, could you please spell your last name for the record?
Diane Lopez, L-O-P-E-Z, Table Mountain Animal Center Foundation Board Directors, Golden, Colorado. And I echo Lynn's comments and appreciation, and would like to add that with each donation the foundation receives from the public, from the cities, from private entities, reinforces our confidence that what we're trying to achieve with the new Foothills Animal Shelter is a good thing for the community and a very good thing for the animals, so thank you for your vote of confidence.
Thank you. For those who are wondering, the mayor's office has a public outreach budget, and $500 was donated to the Table Mountain Animal Shelter during the grand opening or the ribbon cutting and the groundbreaking, so thank you for coming. Do we have anybody else here under public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda, any changes to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to direct the city attorney to prepare an emergency ordinance reducing the city permit fees by 50% on a rebate basis on final inspection for all building permits for the work needed to repair damage from the July 20, 2009 storm, applications of which are not received after July 20, 2009, and two including October 16, 2009, but not to include any reduction in the city imposed sales, use, or excise tax. I further move that consideration of the ordinance be added as new agenda item number nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion to direct the city attorney for an ordinance and add item number nine discussion, seconded by councilmember Sang, discussion on the motion?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Berry?
Ms. Rotola, ahead.
Oh, Ms. Rotola?
I would like to make a different motion on this, please.
A substitute motion?
A substitute motion. I would like to move this to continue to October 15, 2009, an emergency ordinance rebating building permit fees to the owners and permities for all building permits for work needed to repair damage from the July 20, 2008...
Nightstorm.
No, uh, to, to, July 20, 2009 storm.
We have a motion to, a substitute motion to continue this to what date, councilmember Rotola? August 19?
No, October 15.
October 15.
2009, from the July 20, 2009 storm.
Is there a second on the substitute motion?
Okay.
We have a substitute motion, seconded by councilmember Langworthy. Mr. Goke?
Speak to the motion. Why this particular day?
Pardon?
Why this particular date?
Well, because then we'll have all the financial, financial things that are in, and everybody's, with the budget the way it is today, I think we should wait and see what this storm is going to cost us. I don't know what this will entail to give back to the homeowners, I don't know how we're gonna do it. I would like to be able to have more information on this and how this is going to work. So, I would like us to know exactly what this storm is going to cost the city before we proceed with this.
Okay, we have a substitute motion, who's seconded by councilmember Langworthy. Please poll the council on the substitute.
Motion ties four to four with councilmembers Rotola, Berry, Adams, and Langworthy voting yes, councilmembers Stites, Sang, Wamboldt, and Goke voting no.
I vote no on the substitute motion. So now we're back to our main motion as read by councilmember Stites, discussion on that main motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a substitute motion.
Councilmember Adams?
I have a substitute motion.
Could you move the mic a little closer, please?
Sure. I move to direct the city attorney to prepare a budget amendment and an emergency ordinance rebating to the owner permy 50% of such fees for all building permits for work needed to repair damage from the July 20, 2009 storm, applications for which are received after July 20, 2009, and, and including October 16, 2009, but not to include any reduction in city imposed sales, use, or excise taxes. I further move that the 2009 budget be amended to provide for such rebates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Speak to the motion.
We have a substitute motion by councilmember Adams, who's seconded by councilmember Rotola. Councilmember Wamboldt?
Yes, I'm wondering why we require a budget amendment on the motion.
Councilmember Berry?
Well, yeah, I can answer it, since it's my motion, that the situation is that I think it would be unfair for us to allow our citizens to feel that they are going to get this rebate when in fact, we don't know what our budget is to allow them to get the rebate. It's a false pretense, in fact.
What I don't understand is how does it require a budget amendment?
Councilmember Berry?
You know, in, in looking at this, we don't have any mechanism in our current budget to do a rebate. There's no line item, there's no provision. It seems like it's gonna take a supplemental budget appropriation to be able to do any rebates. You know, I think we should, you know, Mr. Goff, is that correct?
Yeah, any new appropriation to the budget would, would require supplemental budget appropriation.
Right. So if we passed an ordinance here, tonight, an emergency ordinance, saying we were going to rebate 50% back of the fees to homeowners, and we didn't pass a budget amendment at the same time, and there were no funds to do that, that would give everyone kind of a false hope of being able to get a rebate. So, in fact, if you're really going to go ahead and do this, you ought to do the budget amendment at the same time and provide for the funds to give the rebate back.
Mr. Wamboldt?
No, I don't agree that it's gonna require a budget amendment. I think the only reason that a budget amendment is coming forward in this motion is so that the mayor cannot vote on it.
Mr. Dahl, do you see any reason why a budget amendment would have to be passed right now when this money is not even realized yet?
Well, as I understand, both of the motions, the net effect would be a reduction in revenue, and at, at some point, council would have to take notice of that. Whether that's tonight or later is up to council.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion by councilmember Adams, seconded by councilmember Rotola. Mr. Goke?
If we're gonna have a budget amendment passed into this particular... If we're going to have a budget amendment passed into this particular emergency ordinance and we're going to be recognizing some sort of revenue stream from this, I just don't understand how we can account for all of this money that we haven't even seen yet. We don't even know what that figure's going to be. We've seen estimates, we've seen all kinds of stuff. We're expending money tonight in this council meeting that will go in excess of $100,000 just to grind up trees and stuff like that that's really not actually accounted for. So, I don't see where the condemnation has to come at this point. If she wants to bring an ordinance forward like this here, I just, I can't think it has any other meaning than to eliminate the tie-breaking vote of the mayor, keeping the people of this community from recognizing a gesture by this city council to help them through a needful time getting through the storm damage. This will help them with their ability to close the gap on their deductibles. We didn't plan as a council to have a storm and a windfall amount of money coming into this city based upon this storm that just happened here. We're going to be collecting huge amounts of fees based upon a $20,000 type of renovation due to storm damage. We'll be collecting in excess of just fees alone, over $400. And there were quite a few houses damaged due to trees and different things of that I just can't see why we need to lock this ordinance with this type of ordinance from the dais. I think what's originally proposed is a sound ordinance. This is not spending money that we didn't have. We don't even have this money. We don't even know what it is. We can't even recognize how much it's going to be. But it's all windfall that the city coffers, that's for sure.
Okay, we have Councilmember Langworthy?
I would like to speak to what Deena stated about it being a windfall. We understand this is additional revenue coming into the city that the city didn't plan for, but on the other side of that, there's additional expenses that the city didn't account for as well. And I mean, to us, at least to me personally, what I feel is that if you have additional 400, I mean, maybe even a rough guess, at a minimum, 400,000 extra, if you give up half of that away, the estimate I received also was that there's at least $170,000 in additional contractors, so that eats up most of that 200,000. That doesn't take into account the additional work that the employees have to do to do those building permit inspections as well. Now, I'm not trying to take away a rebate from people if they can get help from it. What I think is that as a city, we should sit down and find better ways to help our citizens before we, you know, take away all the money. And I don't even, can't imagine what this is going to cost the city, but I mean, I would think that just from the numbers I've seen tonight, we're probably pushing a half a million to a million dollars out of the city pocket right now and you want to give another 200,000 of it away. And we don't really have that. I mean, we have a decent reserve, but our reserve is small compared to many cities. We just don't think that we can take such a hit to our reserves and then keep on giving more money out when I know that there has to be better ways if we sit down and talk with the people that are out there that need the help and find out the best way to help them. Because I'm sure there are plenty of people out there that are willing to give that help and give their neighbor the assistance they need. So, that's my piece on that.
Councilmember Berry, then Councilmember Womble?
You know, it really isn't a statement to say that this is a windfall. And I think really, what, building, it sounds like building permits are just there to collect these and that's not true. Building permits are there to protect public safety and when you have a storm like this, they're even needed more. What happens when you have a storm like this is that you have people who come in, they overinflate prices, they don't do good quality work, they're not licensed contractors, they're not bonded. Those are all the things that a building permit does to protect citizens. If you get someone who is not licensed and bonded and they have an employee who's hurt on your property, you're responsible for that if they aren't licensed and bonded. If they do something on the property that impacts your neighbor's property, you're responsible for it if they aren't licensed and bonded. So, we need to make sure that everyone who gets a building permit and everyone who's doing, who's doing repair work is protected and that's what this is for. We just got done with a building department assessment and that showed that we don't have enough currently, under existing circumstances, we don't have enough plan reviewers, that our inspectors are putting, are doing too many inspections. They're not, they don't have an adequate amount of time to do inspections. The initial estimates from the building department are that we're going to have to hire contractors to help with this extra work and that estimate, just for roofs alone, is $150,000. Where are we going to get that money? We have a big gaping hole in our budget this year. It's three and a half million dollars. We may be able to make 1.3 million dollars up from some of the, this cost savings that the department heads have come up with. We may be able to transfer about 1.2 from our CIP budget, but we have a million dollars left that we have to come up with and it's probably coming out of employees with furloughs and things like that nature. So, we have an increased need to protect the citizens with building permits and we're going to actually end up having, we already have overworked employees in the building department and now we're going to give away the funds so that we can't even hire any inspectors to help the public. What we really need is to make, what we really need to do is to take that extra money, make sure that we get adequate plans, reviewers, and inspectors to make sure that everyone gets the repairs done that they need to do in a quality manner. And we need to make sure that we're able to get that done quickly. What people need to, what they really need the most, in my opinion, is they need to get their building permits done, get through the process quickly, and get their inspections done quickly. The best thing that we can do is to get extra inspectors on hand to help them get through this process. Who pays for all of this? Most people have homeowner's insurance. They have a set deductible for that homeowner's insurance. The homeowner, the insurance companies are paying most of these fees. We don't even know if we give, we decide we have to give these fees back, who they're going to go to? No one's, no one's looked at that. No one's asked, is it going to go to major insurance companies or is it going to go to the homeowners? I don't know. Nobody has come through and done that kind of research. We have this knee-jerk emergency ordinance and frankly, I think it's because it looks, it's really good election-year politics, but it's bad economics and it's bad for public safety. I think we need to take our time and look at this and we need to do. Whatever we do, we need to recover the costs and we need to make sure that we can hire inspectors and protect the public. That's what people need. They don't need some, an extra $200 back that makes the politicians look good in the newspaper but doesn't protect the public.
Quit accusing me of this, Barry. Keep it to the issue. You're accusing Mike Stites and a few others of politics and it's not politics. Remember, good policy is good politics. So, quit accusing people of playing politics up here. They care about the citizens of Wheat Ridge. Do you have any more comments on the issue?
I am finished with my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Womble?
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Dahl, it was my understanding with this ordinance coming forward that the insurance companies would not be party to the permitting fees?
That's correct. I mean, if directed, drafted, let's remember this, if it is adopted, is a form of a public assistance program. It would take the form of a rebate or you'd use, as I understand it, what was paid as building permit fees to measure what, what amount of effectively assistance you would be giving and to whom you would be giving it. I mean, that's for, as I understand it, that using the, and I'm getting to your question a bit, you need to have this background, using, using the people who had applied for a building permit would establish the category of persons eligible and then the amount would be 50% of what they had paid. If you do that on a rebate basis, you are, you would, you would be directing that money back to the homeowner. It would not be going to the insurance company. It would seem to me to be important for the ordinance to provide and for us to require that the homeowner acknowledge that all, that the city's not involved in the insurance program, that they are responsible for whatever responsibilities there are between them and their insurer. No different really than when you do say a personnel settlement agreement, there's always a provision that says, "Look, we're paying you severance pay" or something. You're responsible for all tax consequences of, of that payment and I would expect that we'd want to have the same kind of statement in this program so that whatever the relationship was between the homeowner and the insurer, it would be for them to, to deal with under their insurance contract.
Thank you. You know, time is of the essence on these, really, to me, to wait to October 15th for something that is currently happening. I mean, we're talking about a lot of time. City will move slow by all means, but does it have to move that slow? Not necessarily. Do we think that we can go ahead and push this forward? I think we could. Does it require a budget amendment on monies that we don't even have any perception of coming in? No, I don't think it requires a budget amendment. Has there been a second taken on this motion yet, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, I'd like to make a substitute, substitute motion to the substitute motion to call for the question on the original motion.
Well, actually, that's not allowed. So, we'll have to just vote on the substitute motion, then we'll come back. Anybody else? Councilmember Adams and then Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. District Three, as everyone knows, was hit probably hardest, maybe a little bit in District Four also got quite a bit also. We won't have a contest because it's not a good contest to have. Mike and I both were hit with this storm. I think that it would be best and probably better thought out if we look at the costs incurred prior to the discussion of discounting or rebates. My fear is that we would need to cut other services to our citizens if we are hastily taking this action right now, tonight. We will have overhead costs, as I believe other councilors have pointed out, that are going to incur that we can't even guess at this point in time. The procedure, the staff time, the preparing of the checks for the rebates, all that needs to be figured out, how much time it would take. None of us know that. Permit fees do help pay for the necessary processes that we have in order, the paperwork, the personnel needed to allow our staff to streamline their customer-friendly, efficient service. Our homes in District Three were facing north especially, and that would have been your south, and mine north, was hit very hard by the storm. Most of my neighbors and the neighbors in District Three are in disrepair and having to pull permits for roofing and windows. None of them that I spoke with are terribly concerned about a rebate. Their main concern is efficiency, accuracy, safety, and being able to get these permits pushed in and out in a timely manner. That's what we need to be concerned with because if we aren't able to do that as a city, then my fear is permits will not be pulled and then we have consequences with the permits not being pulled because it is necessary to pull a permit for roofing and siding and windows. Most insurance companies expect to incorporate the permit fee in their cost. I had a long, lengthy time, I don't know, Mike, if your adjuster's been there?
Friday.
Yeah, my adjuster's been there. We spent quite a lengthy day together. When I asked him a little bit about this potential rebate or this discount, he felt it to be extremely unnecessary. He pointed out that State Farm is a mutual company. Their concern is the permitting is done accurately, efficiently, and in a timely manner. By no means would he or expect to have any, his company to have any kind of a rebate, which brings us to the fact that the rebate has not been asked at this point to go to the insurance companies, but the motion that came to us from the mayor, Mrs. Sang and Mr. Gokee originally was asking for a rebate of 50% for all permits pulled. When it was discovered that that rebate would be going to the insurance companies, then suddenly, this emergency motion came forward in a changed view because obviously, giving a rebate to emergence to insurance companies is not helping anybody. My question is, it's not helping anybody to give the rebate to the citizens in the fact that we figure as a council, we are responsible for an entire city. We are not responsible just for District Three and District Four who got the damage. We have to handle a huge budget very thoughtfully for all of our citizens across our city. So, I feel at this time, it would be unfair to rebate and also having talked with my neighbors and my insurance adjuster, an unnecessary move. I also called some neighboring cities on this particular issue. I called Lakewood and I called Golden and I called Arvada to ask them at this point in time, would this be something they would be comfortable with? These are not my words, but these are words from fellow councilors in other cities, that this time would not be wise, this money is used to run cities, not one of the councilors I spoke to. And I did that because I needed a temperature check because it didn't feel right to me and some of them are more senior than I in the political arena. Most of them said, "This is a political move." That's what they said to me. Having had my home hit very hard, I want a clean, fast permitting, honest service and I would even suggest perhaps we would need, if we get backed up and they let us know in the building department they're getting backed up, that we would do fun things like have them come and maybe sit in these neighborhoods and do the permitting fees faster. We're going to have to hire people. Get the people that are coming to my door and believe me, I've had 35 to 40 people minimum at my door. Allow them a quick, easy process so we can permit them and not go back after the fact when the permits were not pulled and then we're really going to be in a bad way. So, we must make good policy on this, on the dais. We must make thoughtful policy and not make political decisions. We have to make a thoughtful process. I do not expect any rebate back. I only expect the service that my city has been providing me with. I fear a storm this winter would just put us over the top. I will not be supporting this.
Actually, it's your motion still.
Oh, well, I do support mine. I support my motion. I do not support the main motion.
Let me go to, everybody's spoken, so Councilmember Sang and Stites will come back around. So, Councilmember Stites?
You know, given a particular point in time, I think you have to vote your conscience. And this was a terrible disaster and I absolutely cannot make money on a terrible disaster. I think that would be a terrible mistake and a terrible decision. We need to help the people. Whether this helps or not, I, you know, I had a lot of damage to my home. I don't know if I would go for the rebate or not because I feel strongly about Wheat Ridge, but I think this is an effort. It's not political on my end of the deal, never has been political on my end of the deal and I resent being told that it is political on my end of the deal, plus others. But my conscience would be clear because I absolutely, positively cannot make money for this city on a disaster.
Councilmember Sang?
I echo what Mr. Stites said also. I would like to clarify a statement that Mrs. Adams said when she said that because District Three and District Four were hit, I had quite a bit of damage to my roof also. So, it did hit in other parts of the city, not in just District Three and Four.
Councilmember Langworthy?
Patrick, I guess I have a question for you. Sorry. If this, if this motion passes tonight without the budget appropriation now, before we can give any rebates, rebates out, do we have to pass a budget amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So, if it passes now without the budget amendment and down the line, it doesn't pass with the budget amendment, then we've given false hope to people who think they're going to receive it. I mean, rhetorical, sorry, I can't make the answer to that one.
Okay.
That's my, I mean, that's my concern and I'm sorry. I don't want, I don't want to make money off of the storm either, but I don't want to put people at risk because we're not dealing with this in a timely manner. And if we could wait on this motion until we see where the city stands and if we do have money extra, then I'm more than willing to go and give it out. You know, if we got, if what we take in for permits is more than the expenses that go out to do these permits, then I would say yes to giving the money back. But at this point, we don't even know what the expense is going to be for these permits, let alone the revenue. And I just, I feel it's unfair to start giving out money that the city may not have if we end up in the red at the end of this.
Mr. Gokee?
I think there's some real assumptions being made here and those are that everyone has insurance on their homes. Everyone has insurance that covers the storm damage. Everyone has insurance that covers the... Everyone has insurance that covers the destructive force of what the trees did, to neighboring houses that frankly, may not be insured, or may be insured, I'm not quite sure. But the main thought was that much of the damage was broken windows, and last time I heard, it didn't take a building permit to fix a broken window. If it does, we got big problems. Because every time somebody breaks a window, they got to pull a building permit. It's going to get kind of cumbersome up at City Hall. There was a lot of cosmetic damage, stuff that was just, you know, you paint it up, and you're done with it. Sure, there was big structural damage to some houses that were poorly built, and some houses that were very old. I mean, the poor house down on 44th, down there, that huge cottonwood fell on, kind of put the second floor in contact with the basement in there, so, you know, there was a lot of damage all over. I just, I seen yards that had a lot of trees blown over, but really, no damage to the structure. So, you know, the assumption that every house was damaged is just that, just an assumption in that area. Sure, there's going to be a lot of ripping permits, but that has nothing to do with broken windows, painting, maybe gutters on your house, or something like that. But, you know, everyone can find something wrong with someone else's statement, and yeah, I definitely have a political agenda here. I got three months left on council, that's why I'm supporting this. Because I'm termed out of office, and I got a real political agenda. And that is, I've always cared for the people of this community. I've came in, attended meetings, when I frankly was told not to by my doctors, I did what was right by this community. What's happening tonight is a travesty by the people that can't attend meetings.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion by Councilmember Adams. It was seconded. We're voting on a substitute motion by Councilmember Adams. Please pull the council on the substitute.
Motion ties four to four with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, Adams, and Langworthy voting yes, Councilmembers Stites, Sang, Wambel, and Goke voting no.
I vote no on the substitute motion. Now, we're still back to the main motion, second, that was, Mr. Stites, Mr. Dahl? Can you explain why you really think there has to be a budget amendment for this? If revenues are coming in, and then some are going back out, why do you think there has to be a budget amendment later on down the line?
Well...
That happens all the time. You get revenues coming in. You're not guaranteed revenues from permit fees all the time, so why is there a budget amendment?
The effect of the ordinance would be to reduce revenues, in terms of what, effectively reduce revenues, but in application, as I've understood the motion, it's a rebate program, so you'll get the full revenues in, and then you will make an expenditure that city will actually cut checks. So, the reason I believe a budget amendment would be required at some point, before you start cutting those checks, is you've got to cut those checks against a fund that is budgeted for that fund. And as I understand, there's probably not a budgeted fund for this program. Necessarily, if we were to do the ordinance, this isn't a multi-year fiscal obligation, but it would likely make sense to indicate that it would have to be subject to appropriations being made, because you're actually cutting, if you were merely reducing the fee, then you wouldn't be cutting any checks. And although you'd be reducing your revenues, you wouldn't have to appropriate money, because you wouldn't be cutting any city checks.
And a budget amendment can come any time in the process. It could come now, two months from now, three months.
That's correct. It would have to come before you started cutting checks.
Yeah, okay. We have, the motion in front of us is Mr. Stites. Do you want to read that one more time, Mr. Stites? And then, Ms. Berry?
I have an amendment also. I'd like to make a substitute. If really the intent here is not to keep any monies and not to make monies on this disaster, I totally agree with that. But what this motion does, what the original motion does, it doesn't provide for us to provide the support to get the building permits done. There's no mechanism here to hire contractors, there's no way to pay for it. So, I would like to make the substitute motion. I move to direct the city attorney to prepare an emergency ordinance rebating to the owner peremptee that amount of the city's fee in excess of the city's actual costs for plan review and inspection, up to a maximum of 50% of such fees, for all building permits for work needed to repair damage from the July 20th, 2009 storm, applications for which are received after July 20th, 2009, to and including October 16th, 2009, but not to include any reduction in city-imposed sales, use, or excise taxes. So any funds we will receive after taking care of all the building permits and paying for it would be repaided.
There's a second?
Second.
There's a substitute motion, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Discussion on the substitute? Please pull the council on the substitute motion.
Motion ties four to four with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, Adams, and Langworthy voting yes, Councilmembers Stites, Sang, Wambel, and Goke voting no.
I'll be voting no, because Mr. Johnson has told me in the past, they cannot really accurately calculate costs of doing business on permit fees and inspections. I vote no on the substitute motion.
Question for procedure? If a motion fails to have a majority, does that motion fail?
All three of them have failed.
So we don't need the mayor to break those ties?
The mayor is required to break all ties, except on adoption and amendment of the budget by trial.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the mayor has to cast a vote.
All right, we've had three substitute motions. All three substitute motions have been defeated. Mr. Stites, do you want to read your motion again, so everybody knows what we're voting on?
I move to direct the city attorney to prepare an emergency ordinance reducing city permit fees by 50% on a rebate basis on final inspection for all building permits for work needed to repair damage from the July 20th, 2009 storm, applications for which are received after July 20th, 2009, to and including October 16th, 2009, but not to include any reduction in city-imposed sales, use, or excise tax. I further move that the consideration of the ordinance be added as Agenda Item Number Nine.
And that was seconded by Councilmember Sang, I believe, Mr. Snow?
That was, yes, seconded by Councilmember Sang.
Okay, please pull the council on the motion.
Motion ties four to four with Councilmembers Sang, Wambel, Goke, and Stites voting yes, and Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, Adams, and Langworthy voting no.
And voting my conscience, which is the right thing to do for the community, I'm Okay, item one is the consent agenda. Councilmember Stites?
Yeah, now we're moving. There's three items on consent. Item one, A, approval of a settlement agreement among, excuse me, 70 WBC LLC, choke me up, approval of a settlement agreement among 70 WBC LLC West Business Center, Longstreet Metropolitan District, and the city of Wheat Ridge. B, approval of $10,000 expenditure for an on-call storm sewer cleaning and repair service. C, resolution 36-2009 amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in an amount not to exceed $127,153, and awarding a contract to Oxford Recycling in the amount of $52,153 for the purpose of tub grinding and disposing of tree branches, limbs, and logs from the July 20th storm. Is the motion in order?
Pulling C, please.
Did he get B?
No, he didn't.
No, he made a motion for one, A, B, and C. Somebody wants to pull C.
Pull C, please.
Mr. Goke?
I pulled C.
C's been pulled. Mr. Mout?
I would like C to be put on the agenda as item number 10. Nine was supposed to be this last one, but evidently, it got in as one. So I would like item C to be item number nine, if you would, please.
We already have number nine.
All right, number 10?
Well, we've got to go to the consent agenda first. So, Mr. Mout, Stites, make a motion for items one, A, and B.
You go.
I move to approve items one A and one B.
Is there a second on items one A and one B?
There is.
Please pull the council on items one A and one B.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, item one, C, Councilmember Adams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that item C be put on the agenda and placed as item number 10, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion for item number 10, which is the resolution number 36-2009, seconded by Councilmember Goke, please pull the council.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Stites voting no.
Okay. Gee, that was item number one, huh?
Yeah, that was.
The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The order of testimony will be city staff, the applicant, the faculty, and the public, followed by council discussion and questions. Please keep all comments remain to the issue. Item number two is Council Bill 17-2009, Councilmember Rotola. Vote for the public hearing, Councilmember Rotola.
Mr. Mayor, actually, we've had a request from the city attorney if we could move item two, since he is out drafting an ordinance as we speak, if you could move item two to now item 11, create an item 11, so when he's back in the room, he can conduct that public hearing.
Is there a motion to move item number two as item number 11?
I move item number two to be item number 11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just pull the council, I'm moving item two as item 11.
I think it does need to change. Point of order, once the agenda is set, doesn't it take a two-thirds to move the agenda?
Attorney's outright in order. It's just the majority vote of council to amend the agenda. There's things that do take three-quarters majority, like suspending the rules, or...
Well, once the agenda is set, though.
So, well, pull the council, I'm moving it to item number 11. We'll see where it comes out. Pull the council, please. We're moving item two to item 11.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Goke voting no.
Okay, so item three is Council Bill 18-2009. I'm going to open the public hearing, Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill, let me turn this back to it. Council Bill 18-2009, an ordinance amending Chapter 22, Article 1 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the requirement of a license to collect sales and/or use tax. The executive summary reads, "While the city code requires a license to do business in the city, there is no such license requirement to collect the sales and use tax that is outlined in the code. As a result, out-of-town business owners are collecting sales and use taxes with no accountability. Numerous out-of-town businesses collect city sales tax anonymously and remit it via miscellaneous sales tax return. Such companies are not required to collect the city tax, because they are not truly engaged in business in the city. The proposed ordinance will amend Chapter 22 of the city code to require these types of businesses to obtain a license to collect taxes, sales and use taxes in the city."
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number? We're on item number three to Mr. Snow.
I'm following, believe it or not, after all that. Council Bill number 18-2009 will be assigned ordinance number 1444.
Thank you. We want to, any other staff comments, other than what's been said tonight? Mr. Young?
I just wanted to add a little emphasis to the need for this bill. We have 661 unlicensed collections through mid-July of 2009. That represents $3.6 million in taxable sales, or $108,000 in sales tax. That's a lot of money that we really don't have a good grip on for economic reasons or for tax analysis reasons. So I really urge you to vote for this ordinance, please.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number three? We'll move on to council questions and comments. Do we have any questions or council comments? Mr. Goke?
Yes. Who collects the tax and use fees?
I don't follow your question.
Who collects the tax and use fees?
They are submitted to the city.
They're submitted to the city.
Who in the city collects them?
I'm the sales tax supervisor.
I think the charter says the treasurer collects it.
Yes.
I happened to be asked by someone that was served a warrant for a use tax violation. And I'll just give you a little background. This is a beauty shop, and the lady that ran the beauty shop passed away, left it to her daughter. Her daughter came in, went down to the city, and picked up her business license. And while she picked up her business license, she informed the people in the Treasury Office that she was just fixing hair. She sold no product at all. Well, a couple of months later, she gets a warrant served to her by a Wheat Ridge policeman, which was, it took two attempts to collect this roughly $50. She came in, she called, because she's very concerned that she'd just been served for this use tax violation that she had explained, and she came into the Treasury's office, and it was dismissed. I wonder how many instances like this happen, where we spend that much resource, an officer that could be out doing something probably a little bit more useful than going around trying to collect tax money, doing this type of stuff. And I asked her specifically if it was a Wheat Ridge policeman, and she said yes, and I was assured that it was. I just think that we need to have a little bit more check and balance in our rules and regulations that are coming forward here than what's in them right now. These came forward with very little discussion at a study session, basically just, we were told we have to enact this stuff and get it in here right away because of shortfalls in the system to cover our revenue stream for the year. And you know what? We've got to do what we've got to do. We've got to collect money, absolutely. If you're running, collecting use tax and sales tax, it needs to be collected in the city. But my experience is that not all of these cases are that crystal clear, and a communication piece would sure go a long ways before passing either what will be item number 11 or number three. So I think it's really important that we understand that the city treasurer has the ability to collect these taxes, do all of this type of stuff, and it's not the city, it's actually the treasurer, or is that incorrect?
It's the city treasurer, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Let's clarify, we are on item number three. It's Council Bill 18-2009, okay? I just want to make sure that everybody knows we're on item number three, okay? So now, do we have any comments or questions about item number three from council?
This was on a use tax.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on item number three, and we're going to vote. The motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill 18-2009, an ordinance amending Section 22 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to require a license to collect the sales tax on second reading, and that it will take effect 15 days after its final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item number three, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Discussion on the main motion. Councilmember Wambel?
You said $3.6 million, is that correct?
In taxable sales.
In taxable sales. Well, that's our shortfall. I think if we just collect the tax, we might be doing well.
Unfortunately, that's taxable sales. Three percent of that.
Okay, Councilmember Goke, do you have a comment?
Yes. Dang it, Terry, I had it right there, you know, it just kind of went right out the window there. What is the fine for this, if they fail to do this?
As of this point in time, until we vote on, until you vote on item number 11... As of this point in time, until we vote on, until you vote on item number eleven, seventeen dash two thousand nine, regarding a fine structure, there really is no penalty for operating without a license.
Well, we're talking about a license to collect use fees.
A license to collect sales tax.
Yeah, to collect sales tax. And...
Same fine structure.
Same, yes.
It's going to be the same fine structure, and what is that fine structure?
Kathy mentioned there's basically nothing right now. We have no enforcement to enforce our code that a business license is required to do business or collect sales tax in the city.
So I move that, I'll make a substitute motion that we move this to agenda item number twelve, because this ordinance we're going to pass, we have not talked about the provision of enforcement yet. We need to talk about enforcement before we enact this ordinance, because if we enact this here, we know right now, no more than we knew before, we haven't enacted a real enforcement piece to this. So I think we need to move agenda item number three to whatever it is, twelve?
Twelve. Well, actually, you could move it to item number twelve as action only. So we have a substitute motion to move item number three to item number twelve for action only. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Do we have a motion to move item number three to follow item number eleven to item twelve for action only? Discussion on that motion to move, please pull the counsel.
Motion fails six to two with council members Wambel and Gokki voting yes.
All right, so now we're back to item number three with the main motion for approval. That was seconded. Discussion on the main motion. Please pull the counsel on item number three.
Motion carries six to two with council members Wambel and Gokki voting no.
Item four is council bill fourteen dash two thousand nine, I'm going to open the public hearing, council member Sang.
Thank you, mister mayor. Council bill fourteen dash two thousand nine, an ordinance reappointing presiding municipal judge Christopher Randall, increasing his compensation and approving a presiding municipal judge service agreement. Reappointment of presiding municipal judge Christopher Randall, approval of an increase in his compensation and a renewed service agreement. The charter requires the council to appoint a municipal judge in a two-year term. Judge Randall's current term expires June twenty-fifth, two thousand nine. He has requested reappointment upon the expiration of his current term under those terms and conditions set forth in this ordinance and the attached presiding municipal judge services agreement. So motion in order?
Motion's in order. Oh, wait, 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 we got a, we're going to send an ordinance number?
Yes, council bill fourteen dash two thousand nine will be assigned ordinance number one four four five.
Mister Young, I guess like you're it, do we have any staff report besides what was written in the executive?
We have nothing for you, your honor, thank you.
Do we have anybody from the public to speak on item number four, the judge's salary and compensation and contract? Council questions or comments on this item number four before I close the public hearing? Council member Gokki.
Yeah, the motion's going to be passed, there is a lack of, we're not going to offer him a compensation package. We have to clarify the public, Judge Randall is doing an outstanding job in this community and has enacted and brought forward some real innovative changes in our system, and he's really an asset to this community. It just shows that, you know, in some areas, we just can't afford to be spending the money. He has already increased his fine schedule. I have it in my inbox, and I haven't read it yet, but that's where we're at with that, and I support this motion.
Well, there's no motion yet. We've got to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve ordinance fourteen forty-five, series two thousand nine, an ordinance reappointing presiding municipal judge Christopher Randall with the following amendment to section one. No increase in hourly compensation and approving a presiding municipal judge's service agreement including a compensation review on or before July first, two thousand ten, on second reading and take effect upon adoption as permitted by the charter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please note that this motion was given to council member Sang by the city attorney, and this was seconded by council member Langworthy. Discussion on the main motion as amended by the city attorney and through council member Sang. Please pull the counsel on the main motion.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. Item five is council bill nineteen dash two thousand nine, council member Berry.
Residential development standards are primarily set forth in section twenty-six, two oh five through twenty-six, two fourteen of chapter twenty-six. These standards include building setbacks, size, and height, as well as minimum lot sizes for different land uses. This code amendment was identified as a high priority item as part of the short-term zoning code amendments staff has been working on for a number of reasons, as expressed in the neighborhood revitalization strategy. The ordinance proposes various changes throughout the residential zone districts. The following general changes are proposed. Classifying accessory buildings as major versus minor, and adding a new accessory buildings section. The current code only regulates detached garages and storage sheds as accessory buildings. Allowing accessory buildings to encroach into front and street setbacks where the existing principal building already encroaches. In most districts, reducing the front setback from thirty feet to twenty-five feet. In most districts, reducing side and rear setbacks for accessory buildings so that they are treated similar to the principal buildings. The planning commission reviewed this code amendment at a public hearing held on June eighteenth, two thousand nine, and gave a recommendation of approval.
Motion's in order.
Got to scroll down. Oh, come on. The PDF is going slowly. Okay. I move to approve council bill number nineteen, two thousand nine, case number Z O A oh nine oh two, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Code of Laws concerning residential development standards on first reading, ordered at published, public hearing set for Monday... Do we move that?
Twenty-fourth.
Is it still the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Okay. August twenty-fourth at seven P M. in the city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion for approval on first reading, seconded by council member Sang and Rotola? Please pull the counsel.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thanks. Item number six is council bill twenty dash two thousand nine, council member Stites.
Yes, thank you, mister mayor. I'd like to introduce council bill number twenty, two thousand nine, an ordinance adopting amendments to the two thousand three international building code and to the two thousand three international residential code, both as previously adopted by reference concerning building permit fees and certain reference standards. Normally, I would not read the executive summary, but I'm going to tonight because this is a good one. The proposed ordinance adopts amendments to the previously adopted two thousand three additions of the international building code and international residential code. The amendments would achieve two things. One, a reduction in building permit fees applicable to several small-scale home improvement projects, and two, the elimination of the current requirement, appendix J, that small-scale remodeling and renovation projects require a homeowner to bring other areas of the home not being worked on into compliance with all applicable codes. The intent of both these amendments is to reduce the burden on homeowners who wish to perform home renovations and remodeling projects. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move that council bill number twenty, two thousand nine, an ordinance adopting amendments to the two thousand three international building code and the two thousand three international residential code, both as previously adopted by reference concerning building permit fees and certain reference standards on first reading, ordered at publics, public hearing set for Monday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand nine, at seven P M. in city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
Motion for approval, seconded by council member Wambel, please pull the counsel.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is council bill twenty-one dash two thousand nine.
Council bill number twenty-one, two thousand nine, an ordinance amending section twenty-six, five oh one of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning off-street parking surface. Amending chapter twenty-six, article five, subsections twenty-six dash five oh one A and B of the Code of Laws by prohibiting the parking of vehicles on landscaping or compact dirt surfaces unless these surfaces are residential driveways. The ordinance defines residential driveway and hard surface.
Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve council bill number twenty-one dash two thousand nine, an ordinance amending section twenty-six, five oh one of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning off-street parking surface requirements be approved on first reading or published on a public hearing set for Monday, August twenty-fourth, at seven P M. in the city council chambers, and to take effect on August thirty-first, two thousand nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by council member Langworthy, please pull the counsel.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Before we move on to item number eight, I've asked a couple of council members to ask for breaks. We're going to take a ten-minute break, come back at eight-thirty for item eight.
You mean nine?
Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move that Council Bill Number 22-2009, an ordinance adopted by reference, the 2009 edition of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado and the Model Traffic Code amendments previously adopted by the city, providing penalties for model traffic code violations and making conforming amendments to the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws be approved on first reading, ordered publication, set for public hearing and consideration on second reading at 7:00 PM in City Council chambers on September 14th, 2009.
Second.
The motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Otola, on item number eight. Please put it to the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Mr. Dahlberg, on item number nine, the emergency ordinance, do you have copies for council or how are we doing this?
I have copies for council.
Okay.
I give them to Mr. Gokee, he's pressing them out.
Thank you.
What I'm going to do here tonight is pass the gavel to Councilmember Sang. I have a quick presentation on the computer that we're going to turn over to Mr. Dahl and then we'll go to Mr. Gokee. Do you want to introduce this first, Mr. Gokee, then I'll do that?
Yes, I think we need to have a motion on the floor.
No, yeah.
I mean, I need to read the...
Yeah, read the executive summary or whatever is on there.
Okay. Agenda item number nine, an ordinance providing for a time-limited rebate of a portion of the city's building permit and inspection fees for the repair and damage caused by the July 20th, 2009 storm and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor, it might be helpful if you had me just track through the ordinance.
Yeah, that's right. We're going to do your comments first and I'll go to the computers. I'm going to pass the gavel to Councilmember Sang and I'll be down over here.
All right. But, I mean, do you want me to explain the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's a single reading ordinance which is permitted under the charter. The whereas clauses just describe, the first one describes the storm. The second is, I think, important because it defines what the permit fees are because you have to decide what it is that you're measuring or the cost for which you're measuring. And the design of the second, whereas, to define permit fees as building permits and inspections for which the city charges a fee pursuant to Chapter 5. The third whereas supports the emergency declaration. The fourth whereas indicates council's desire to provide a rebate program. You'll notice there it excludes the sales, use or exercise taxes, has the 50%. In thinking about it, I realize the storm was on July 21st, but it was after 10 o'clock at night and there weren't any building permits received. If a building permit was received on July 20th during the day, it would have been for work not related to the storm. So I felt that we should not include any building permits received on that day. That is why you see July 21st in some places, July 20th in others. The heart of it, of course, is Section 1 that says 50% of the permit fee, same definition, shall be rebated to the owner for which the building permits issued following final inspection. And then there's a series of conditions. I felt that it's important to say that Chapter 5 is temporarily amended accordingly because it's got a fee schedule in it. You have to seek to repair damage caused by the July 20th storm. There's an application requirement, and this is where I put what I heard from council on the subject of insurance. You have to file an application and will have to come up with some kind of application form, but the application will say, "I'm asking for rebate because this was work connected with the storm." And there needs to be a statement on the form that says the purpose of the work was to repair July 20th storm damage, acknowledging the owner's understanding and responsible for all their other reporting requirements regarding insurance, acknowledging the city's not a party to any insurance. If you don't sign the form, you don't get the rebate. The procedure, as I understand it, they pay the full amount of the fees at the time of the application upon final inspection and if they submit the complete form, then the city will rebate. The period of eligibility, I didn't catch it July 20th. That should be July 21st in letter D. A reduction in sales, use or exercise tax programs conditioned on subjects to the council's approval of an appropriation. Section 2 is the emergency declared. The case law is that the courts will not look beyond, you need to describe what the emergency is in your opinion, and that is in the second sentence of Section 2. As I sort of listened to the council discussion, that's kind of how I chose to articulate it. It's up to you how you articulate it. The courts uniformly support an emergency declaration. They do not put themselves in your shoes. They don't second-guess you in your statement, but you need to make a statement about what you believe the emergency was. And under the charge, Section 513, that the ordinance adopted tonight would take effect immediately. So, be happy to answer any questions.
I think I'll go and then we'll go back to the questions. Just real quick, some comments here. As was stated earlier, councilmembers Gokee and Sang and myself had discussed a rebate fee for the permits. And that was batted around through emails and some of you, all of you should have got the emails. And as you know, I always go through the city attorney to make sure that what we're talking about is obviously legal and equitable. And the email went out, we were talking about a rebate at the front end. And that raised some red flags and we do want to listen to everybody on council. The city manager sent out an email saying, "Well, if you're going to do this, a rebate of fees upfront is really only going to benefit probably the insurance companies and/or the contractors." So one of the things I went back to the city attorney was, I said, "Well, if you got directed to make this ordinance and to write this ordinance, does it make sense to do a rebate after the fact for the property owner?" And that's where that motion came from, that Councilmember Stikes read tonight, that the goal was that after all the fees are paid upfront, that the property owner would submit proof of inspection on their property and they would get the rebate through a check cut through City Hall. And as Mr. Dahl explained earlier, there'll be forms and permits that they have to go through at City Hall. What I wanted to do is show you, I was talking to one of the employees up at Planning and Zoning, and on your screen is the City of Wheat Ridge Building Colorado building fee schedule for $0 to $50,000 worth of work. And basically, as you see, for evaluation, it goes from $0 to $50,000 and on the permit fees, columns two and column four are permit fees, and that's the permit fee you're going to pay on values of work. So, for example, look at $20,000. Your permit fee for $20,000 right now, no matter what, is $417.70. That's your permit fee hardcoded. On top of that permit fee, you may also have to pay, and according to this ordinance you will, you could pay a plan review fee of 65% of the permit fee. So in this case, it'd be 65% of $417. You may pay a reinspection fee. We're not waiving that. We're not waiving the plan review fee. And we're not waiving the demolition permit fee, obviously for $50. Signs, I'm not even going to address that because I don't know if we're talking about signs in residential. Structure moving permit fee, that's going to be $100. And the use tax, the use tax is 3% on 60% of the valuation. So in this case, all of these fees will be paid upfront, including the use tax upfront to the City of Wheat Ridge. And the use tax is 3% on 60% of the valuation of the work. So what I wanted to show you is based on $20,000, here's a PowerPoint presentation, I know we all love PowerPoint presentations. This is a simple example of how this permit fee rebate would work. For example, a property owner in the City of Wheat Ridge has $20,000 worth of work. That could be a combination of roof, windows, non-permit items that they wouldn't pay the permit fee on. The permit fee for $20,000 right now is $417.70. That's hardcoded into our current schedule. The use tax, which they will pay upfront also, is $20,000 times 60%, equals $12,000 times 3%, is $360. That's the use tax. That will not be rebated to anybody asking for a rebate. The total fees... ............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. And the use tax is 3% on 60% of the valuation of the work. So, what I wanted to show you was, based on $20,000, here's a PowerPoint presentation, I know we all love PowerPoint presentations. This is a simple example of how this permit fee would, rebate would work. For example, a property owner in the City of Wheat Ridge has $20,000 worth of work. That could be a combination of roof, windows, non-permit items that they wouldn't pay the permit fee on. The permit fee for $20,000 right now is $417.70. That's hardcoded into our current schedule. The use tax, which they will pay upfront also, is $20,000 times 60%, equals $12,000, times 3% is $360. That's the use tax. That will not be rebated to anybody asking for a rebate. The total fees-